Good evening and welcome to the City of Montgomery City Council meeting. I would like to ask everyone to please make sure your phones are on vibrator or off during the meeting so that everyone can be heard. And I'd like to call it to order. It's exactly 6:02 PM. I'd like to begin this evening with an invocation. TJ, would you like to give that this evening?
Well, we come this evening with humble hearts and bow heads. We're coming thanking you for our last night lying down in our early morning rise. Watch over us while as we go forward. Pray for this administration, Lord, that we're here with the President, Mayor, City Administrators, all the Public Works Department, each head of each department. And I'll thank all the citizens of Montgomery and may we do this in our life and serve them. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Now I'll have the Court of Appeals tonight's flag first. I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag?
Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Sometimes I'm forgetful. Did I receive anything for the visitor and citizens forum this evening? So we went right along and before we officially begin, according to the agenda, I'd like to make a recognition this evening. Because of COVID, we have not been meeting in here and we just began. So unfortunately, we missed a very important milestone. Kimberly Duckett, I wanted to say congratulations on your five years with the City of Montgomery. I'd like to give you a token of appreciation and acknowledge, thank you for all the work that you've done. Sorry it's a little late, but we want to make sure that we are recognizing you, letting you know you are appreciated.
Thank you.
Speech, speech.
Speech, Cameron.
Surprise.
Yes. She was.
All right. Now on to the first item of business on your agenda, which would be the consent agenda. Number one, matters related to the approval of the June 8, 2021 regular meeting minutes. Number two, consideration and possible action regarding an interlocal agreement by and between the City of Montgomery and Montgomery County regarding reimbursement of COVID-19-related expenses. And number three, consideration and possible action regarding TXCBG contract number 721 7320 amendment number two. Counsel, you can take these individually or cumulatively? What is your pleasure?
I move to take them cumulatively.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded that we accept these cumulatively. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It is open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting these items, the consent agenda cumulatively, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the consent agenda as presented. One point of note, I'd like to note that Ms. Julie Davis is not here this evening, however, we do have a forum. Okay. Consideration and possible action, number four on the agenda. Consideration and possible action regarding accepting a proposal for Moritz and Associates, PLST, for completion of application renewal for Texas Pollution Discharge Elimination System, TPDES, permits for both the Stewart Creek and Town Creek wastewater treatment plants.
The TPDES permits are permits for wastewater treatment plants in the city. They must be reviewed every five years so that the sewer treatment plants can be properly permitted. The city maintains a permit on the older treatment plant site, Stewart Creek wastewater treatment plant. In addition to that, they currently operate the site at the Town Creek wastewater treatment plant. The reason for maintaining the older facility is to give the city greater flexibility with its future wastewater treatment if it needs to put that site back into operation. It would be much, much easier to put a existing plant that's not operating back into operation than to re-permit a new plant from the ground up. And so that is the reason for maintaining that permit. And given that the scope of this work, it's the kind of thing that I would put a highly high recommendation on having the currents to the engineer do versus taking a couple months and the expense of going out for an R and Q. I know I have, it's been a subject of conversation in the past between myself and counsel, that I do intend to look at statements of qualification and requests for qualifications for larger projects. It's not a large project, this is an housekeeping item, you can only decide to say. And so with that, I do recommend the acceptance of the proposal. And you do have a present of the engineer a couple of years ago.
Is there anything that's the ordinary from what we typically do every five years?
No, this actually completes the ordinary.
Okay. All right. When I move to accept the, sorry, when we accept the proposal as submitted?
As seconded.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept the proposal as submitted. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It is open for discussion. All those in favor of approving the proposal as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the proposal as submitted. Number five on your agenda. Consideration and possible action regarding adoption of the following ordinance. An ordinance by the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, amending Chapter 46, Peddlers, Solicitors, and Vendors of the City of Montgomery Code of Ordinances to add Section 64-6, Street Festivals Providing for Fees and Penalties, Repealing All Other Conflicting Ordinance Provisions, Providing a Severability Clause, and Providing an Effective Date After Publication.
Counsel, may you remember, it was last fall, we approved changes regarding festivals to this ordinance and other items. And I suspect as the world changes and my memory actually has a lot more wrapped around this, this may be an ordinance that we come back to periodically to find to and update as conditions change. Specifically, what's on the agenda today regarding Chapter 64 is, our previous change allowed for street festivals, what most of you might think of what we commonly call events in the city. But it did not provide specific guidelines for how to permit that, so that is what has gone into here with this ordinance that's being put forward in front of you today. Each festival, each street festival application, a street festival is the defined term for when we think of as a larger event out in the city. They'll be required to be reviewed by the police, the final approval by the city administrator, once approved, the permit would be issued and filed in the office of the city's city secretary. This ordinance provides for a cleanup deposit in the amount of $200, and that number came from the public works director after considering, you know, what staff time might be necessary. That could be refundable if the event is cleaned up after itself. That way, we're not seeking to charge them after the fact. We're holding on to the deposit and we can refund it if it's not necessary. And is that would cover the cost of two of the public works group if we're not sure that it's necessary. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the ordinance listed forth here. Couple of things that I would also like to hit on in the text. This provides that the application would need to be turned in 30 days prior to the event. You know, this will, we're not going to enforce this on things we have in progress, right now that are imminent. For instance, Independence Day weekend, we have something coming up. We're not someone deciding this here and we're looking forward. You know, there are the fee of $50 for the festival permits. I think one of the most notable items, it is of the most value to us in the city, is that for non-food vendor participants, you know, they will not have to individually permit the city as vendors. They will be covered by this ordinance. Those putting on the event will provide a list of those vendors to us so that we, the city will be notified who is participating. But if you imagine one of our larger events, or even something strong, that might have 30, 40 vendors there, it's like, we don't really need them all here, we just need to know who they are. And so that will put that administrative burden on those putting on the event and take it off of all these vendors who might be coming in once or twice. And, you know, and that's going to complain in the past by some of them, why should they permit for something that they're going to come in here this twice? You know, we do have a six-month option on permitting that's provided, perhaps modifications. But if they're only going to come once or twice, that might not be interesting. So this is hopeful also to encourage more to participate in this. So if you have any other questions, I mean, I can correct those. But I just want to reiterate, like I said at the beginning, I envision that there will be modifications as time goes on, as events change. Certainly, the city of Montgomery is changing. We see a lot of events today than we did, you know, five weeks ago. The way the community keeps brewing and the career of area keeps growing, I envision there'll be a lot of changes to come as well.
Richard, I heard what you said, that Mike said that $200 deposit is enough, but if I recall correctly, we've had previous events that the cleanup was more expensive because we had to pay the guys overtime and what, all hands on deck, it was a lot more expensive than that, is from my memory. Are you sure 200 is enough?
We discussed it and 200 is, well, 200 is a good number to hopefully be safe, but also to not discourage someone from wanting to do anything else. We don't want to push people away because of a large deposit like we did with hyrometers years ago. We pushed people away from using hyrometers because we made the deposit so large and basically held it making a decision for them to try to steal water instead. So we don't want to do that, we don't want to put a burden on anyone, but it's a gamble. It's, we have had much worse. We've also had a ladder cleanup that 200 sort of been more than enough. So a big part of that is with the candy.
I was going to say candy is saving us, victim.
The number, of course, has dropped dramatically. If it is a large cleanup, it still will not be seven, eight hours for picking up candy.
And you feel like that adding this deposit would encourage cleanup behavior from the festival rower? Or those are, those are in charge of the event downtown?
I think so. 200 is a, it's a good enough number to at least make someone think about, you know, we might need to make another sweep back through to check everything versus, you know, the alternative of let someone else worry about it.
I just thought it was low given what I remembered, but if you're comfortable with it, if you're comfortable.
Well, I think the candy.
The candy was a big issue at the Christmas parade, right? Okay.
And I agree, there could be the, the ice skating event that might be more expensive, but I think the chances of that, as Mike said, with the candy throwing the longer item, the chances of that, I think, are low. And if we find out we're wrong, we can come back and rediscover it.
Richard, I want to ask, does this also apply to like holiday parades and things like that? Because I know it talks about handling animal watch stations, you know, we've got horses and things. Is that?
Yeah, events and festivals, so that's also a thing.
Okay.
I had another question. So on the certificate of insurance listing the City of Montgomery as additional insurer, it is my understanding through TML, we have insurance for the festival, but we're requiring them to get an additional policy?
That would be if, you know, if there's, if they, if there's something that we need to seek through their insurance.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that they're the cause of, you know, ours, you know, say covers the general public or something, but imagine that there's, say, a vendor doing something and they're the cause of something that's damaged, yes, our insurance covers it, but if it's they're the cause, theirs should cover it as well.
So then, in the case of a parade, and vehicle or horse, whatever, goes, runs into a building, is that on our insurance or is it on the festival's insurance? Or is it on the independent person whose vehicle, horse that is?
Well, that's an example of why we're, why, what you asked is a complicated question because there's multiple links to the plot. But in general, the generality I think you're going for is, that's why we're seeking that they have insurance because it's an insurance. Because it's a city event, our insurance would cover it. However, it's going to be more appropriate that the one causing the damage, their insurance would cover it. And so the city, if their insurance didn't properly pay, if they didn't properly pay, the city insurance would pay for it, and then it would go after that, that person, that entity, that insurance company. Otherwise, we, otherwise, we could be the only one fighting.
We just went through this with the Antique Festival and they had been paying $1,000 for an insurance cost they didn't need, and it was cutting into HMBA's profits, right? So what we found out through TML is that the city would have insurance, so therefore that was able to save them on that expense. So I didn't know if that same idea would apply here.
The example, you know, the example I thought of with regards to this was, if you imagine, say, a food truck vendor, and then their food truck which is fired and enters a neighborhood in that car. You know, that, you know, that's our way to make sure that they have their proper insurance in place.
And so we would go after that food truck or we would go after the festival?
Well, their insurance should take care of it and their insurance should identify the city. But if for some reason there was a problem, we know ours' insurance is their responsibility. That just having insurance can't cover everything, that's where the city is, you know, because we have to cover everything. So that's a protection for the city.
Thank you for the clarification. So this is even for like Sippin Strong?
Yes. And at an event like that.
First Saturday and all of that? Yes?
But the ones that are elite events, you know, as a reminder, they don't, they can permit over a six-month period. And we will specifically be working more with them because they will be in back and forth and in and out. And as I said earlier, for those that are ongoing events that are in the pipeline right now, we will work closely with them to get this in line, you know, from presuming approval from this date going forward. And we're not, we're, our interest is working with them to get everything covered, not preventing anything from happening.
May I adopt the ordinance as presented?
Certainly.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt the ordinance as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It is open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the court ordinance as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the ordinance as presented. Next item of business on your agenda is the departmental reports. Number six, administrative reports for May 2021. Richard?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. We have written reports and I'll be, some regards to my report, I'd like to start with June 24 through noon 5:00 PM. We've worked with Texas Department of Emergency Management to host juvenile COVID vaccine clinic that will be in the city community center off of Liberty District, 4149. And they will also be returning next month to do the second round of shots. Those provided at no cost to those who need them. The main point is, you know, a lot of providers will be providing vaccinations, started scaling those down. Around the same time they became eligible, the juveniles became eligible to start receiving these, and so we've had a number of calls. It also came to our attention that Texas Department of Emergency Management was sponsoring and sending these out, so that was the opportunity to make tracking this together. Do you know anyone who is looking for those vaccinations for their juveniles or even adults to get them as well? Please let them know and something that way we're advertising it on the city social media. And, because again, it's June 24, noon through 5:00 PM.
How many vaccines do we have?
I'm sorry?
How many vaccines do we have?
There are a minimum of 50. And the personnel who will be giving the vaccinations are trained Army National Guard personnel, so we'll track that. And we've also notified the local school district, you know, in case they had anyone who was looking for those, that they would come in that direction as well. The interim transition is well underway. Most items that are transitioning to WGA from Jones Carter, you have already transitioned. And we have, we went into, we had a meeting with both parties and had organized lists of what items are transferring when, and so we're proceeding according to that list. And there are a couple of items that will stay with Jones Carter, with, you know, a couple of ongoing project items. And right now, they're, according to the issue of two traffic studies, one off of 1097, the speed study, as well as the traffic signal study. Earlier this meeting, we heard the interlocal agreement with Montgomery County on COVID funding, and that will be sent to Montgomery County this week. The commissioner's court still has to pass that, but that will open up the door to them to release the funds to Montgomery County. I have some contact from the city council, and I want to make this known to all who might be interested. TML is hosting a small cities workshop on July 15 in Austin. It's a half-day question and answer problem solving event. I think it's the kind of thing that, you know, might be of interest. If you have any interest in that, is, you know, email myself for season, and we can work on getting you all signed up for that. If there's several that do want to attend, we can work on transportation as a group. I know some over there did some conversation among council and staff about the tablets that are used. If there's any interest from some of the council on getting newer device, we're looking at some laptop computers that might be easier to read and follow. Again, let us help or send them know, you know, maybe we can upgrade the device if that makes it easier for you to follow along and, you know, process your deals. Just want to mention, as was announced earlier, congratulations to Kimberly Duckett, you know, our quarter news grader, our 5th anniversary, that was actually, I think, back in September. But because of COVID, we didn't have a Christmas party where all those were done. And honestly, anyone who gets one over Christmas for something that would give them almost six and a half year anniversary, you know, Kimberly is a very valued department that we have here in the city. Certainly is someone who is often off to the side and doesn't get a lot of recognition, but is certainly deserving.
Thank you.
And from my reading, my city minister's report, the final item I want to mention is, again, vacation from June 24 through July 6. I'll be hiking up and visiting family in Colorado, so if you might get home to me, come up there, come find me, I'll be happy to talk to you.
I think your voice got a little bit lighter when you were discussing.
It'll go with me. If I hear the temperature is 105 down here, I might have to extend it.
Yes, 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 yes.
I can move from there. Second half of my report is a development report, hit the highlights on there. Residential and commercial construction are both continuing throughout the city. The Autozone is close to complete and they're near getting this lot fixed in the month through May 31 for the calendar year. We had 23 new homes completed, and there are more new homesites coming later this year, both in Hills and Town Creek, where 30 new homesites will go to the market in the new section. And also in the age of Town Creek Crossing. So two opposite ends of the city, both adding new housing this year and putting new sections online. And I see no reason that the housing market will continue the way it is for the autos that have been snapped up as soon as they go off the market. The downtime improvement plan draft, which is in product of the NEBC, but when completed, comments provided to council, is expected in late July. And so I expect the NEBC board to approve the, you know, after comments in the month of August. Also attached the sales tax report for your review. We don't have anyone from the company this month to provide comment. There is some changes ongoing with the firm that I'll be discussing with them earlier this month. I think there's some, there's some manpower change there. And so I'll be able, I'll go more earlier this month.
But we're still staying with this, all right?
But I see no reason that that will change for the time being. And I don't have any information as to why that would need to change, but I think it's just a matter of a new person that, that will be dealing with that. And that's what I have for my reports for this part. I'll also have the utility report for the downtown.
All right. Number seven, public works, our third report for May 2021, Mike McLeary.
Team Mayor, Council? Is it working? Here. It's all red. I have no problem with that. Mayor, Council, I'll go through my monthly report, try to keep it brief though, just hit on a couple of highlights. On the water section, we replaced several meter box lids and activated and deactivated 18 water counts. On the wastewater side, we completed 11 workhorses for sewer tanks and two for sewer stopoves. On the streets and drainage, we removed fallen limbs and debris from storm vents and repaired four pipelines. On the maintenance building facility equipment maintenance, we replaced EPAS and receiver at the sewer plant gate and repaired brake wiring on our Nell trailer. And on the parks and recreation side, we prepared the floaters dedication area at Cedar Break Park and rebuilt flower beds at the entrance to Homecoming Park. Fertile citizens reported 684 visitors per month and provided 44 tours. And we assisted with the Antique Fest and attended a meeting with the Eagle Scout Union to discuss a possible lighting project in Mary Park. So, any questions?
I was reading, I did have one thing. I was reading, I can't find it now, but I was reading earlier, there was a lift station three or something that had like four or five calls, something, it seemed like it was all electrical or related. Is that something that's?
It is, so Michael covered that issue, but we did, but we did have a lot of electrical issues this last month. I think he's got all those on his, on his call out list. All right. Thank you all.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We have your report. Is there any questions? I don't have much to say.
Chief, I want to thank you for how detailed your report is. It gives a very clear vision of what's going on in the city by what your patrol division is doing and the breakdowns. I received an email this week from a gentleman that was concerned with our activity on 105 and regarding Montgomery being a speed trap. And because of your detailed reports, I was able to go back through the minutes and find those. And luckily, he realized that not everybody that's pulled over is for a speeding ticket, that there's other things going on in the city. And you made it very easy for me to go and reference, so I appreciate that and not have to do a formal records request. So thank you for that.
Yesterday, city manager, you know, that phone call as well. We went back and looked at those and when we started our traffic conditions, one of these DWI's that we had this month, I came with that traffic condition. And so those are the things you got to, some people are going to, just as many people as we get saying, oh, get the speed trap. These are those people also, so every week, we need traffic.
If we're down to the speed check, I guess, so down.
So we more than ever in this game will be playing, which, do you think that?
So 12 DWI's, that's high.
That's really high.
Are they, is it coming from people that were in the city or people driving through the city that were drinking in the city? Okay. That's high for us. And that's probably the highest I think I've ever seen here. Yeah, okay.
Any questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Kimberly Duckett with the court report. We'll go easy on you because it's your five-year, we're celebrating your five-year.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. For the court report for the month of May, there were 205 citations ready for court, and the collections were 21,195 intensive for the local mayor's place. Any questions for the court report? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Kimberly Duckett with the court report. We'll go easy on you because it's your five-year, we're celebrating your five-year.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. For the court report for the month of May, there were 205 citations ready for court, and the collections were 21,195 intensive for the local mayor's place. Any questions for the court report? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next is water operations report for May 2021. Michael from H2O. You skipped number 10. He already gave it. He gave it on the back of his city administrator's report. I didn't, I didn't hear it.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We have your May operations report. Page two, there's a question about the station three callouts. We did have a number of electrical issues, whether it's related to the weather that was with the town or all across the area, or this empty jet issue itself. Mike has been in contact with the energy director, trying to resolve this issue right now. But I'm just trying to clear this up now. So it's a pretty busy page, but if you take out all the electrical and rain-related issues, there's only three issues that stand out, and that's going to be your fourth one now, lift station four sewer backup. There was a manhole overflowing, we had a sewer stoppage that we had to get. So what that is, is a freestyle look at the lines, eventually just completely block the pipe and prevent it from going through. So everything that gets, gets going. And down towards the bottom, you have 512 sewer backup on 20821 Eva Street. We were about a sewer backup, but we found out that to be a private issue, believe that was, what bank is that, Mike? There was a wood forced, wood forced bank. And then on the 15th, we had a lift station three over temperature. And then on the 15th, we had a lift station three over temperature. And so we found the pumps, one pump running, all the pumps that wouldn't have run, we had to have pumps fueled clean. So, but the remainder of the high of our electrical issue, which we're trying to work with. Page three is your wastewater pipeline flow detail. Flow this month was 6,475,000 gallons. Daily deep flow was May 1st, 2021, 764,000 gallons. And our average daily flow is 215,900 gallons, 54% of your current capacity. So it's a little higher now because of all the rain, but you still have plenty of floor space there. Page four is your apartment monitor report. All samples were appliance for month of May and recorded total of 9.45 inches of rain. And then page five is your water report. We found a total of 2,365,000 gallons, plus a total of 178,000. It sold a total of 9,722,000, bringing to 96% of liability. At the bottom right of page, you see the total connection amount. Page six and seven, there's all the charts, 13 month history. And then the last thing I'd like to mention is we did get a letter back from TCQ notifying us that the wastewater treatment inspection that was completed, they gave us clean bill of health, no violations issued, so where the city's following all the rules and regulations set out on the state. So what's with your news now?
I'd just like to add on that for the council, for those of you especially who are newer here, you know, getting a clear inspection report with no violations on each quarter trip, that is not easy.
Mr. Trump, thank you.
Appreciate it. Any questions, Council?
Thank you, Michael. We'll go back up to number 10, utility and development report for May 2021.
Thank you, I'll keep up with this brief, Mayor. Utility elections for the month of utilities were just shy of 150,000. We're getting to the more parts of the year, obviously those are higher due to water use. There were over $17,000 collected in construction warranties. And one item that I find is most significant to note, between the new water counts and disconnected water counts, a lot of that is transitional people, people moving out and in. But, you know, we continue a next decade, we have empty, we have some runoff, so that might not sound like a lot. That is a 1% growth that, and we have had a 1% monthly growth off the money for, you know, 10, 12% growth rate in years. There's an awful high growth rate that the city has seen and has maintained. So just want to bring that to you. So that's, I'll ask for that if you have questions to report.
Mr. Anthony Lasky for the finance report for May 2021 and quarterly investment report.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Just to summarize in the finance report for y'all, turn to page three, page eight, one under packet. For your general fund, you are around seven and a half months of reserve. And for your NEDC on page four, over two years reserve. And for your utility fund, just under one years reserve. Pages, next few pages for your cash flows, a couple of checks to point out as far as invoices that we paid for the month of May to kind of stand out. First, we just want to mention the sales taxes collected for May of 2021, which was just over 404,000. One of the invoices was for check 31228, AD Design Pro, sensor side installment for the live stream that was on your checklist, as well as the pit reimbursement for the year for this past year, 38,364,38. Moving on to the next few pages, page 11 of my report should be page 89 on floors. Your budget for general fund, collected of that 420,000, 30,000 of it in your general fund. We did receive the June numbers and it was just under 280,000 that we collected for that month, which will show in next month's report. For revenues for the month of May, we were roughly 27% over on our revenues. That's a year, we are thus far yet once completed, 97% of revenues collected. And then for expenditures, we were 12% under for the month of May, and then we are roughly 74% collected expenditures. And then the only other things for your report is we did have pay statement for paid for your downtown water line improvement for 135,400. And then we also had a successful refunding, which will show more of that information on your next month's report. However, on the last page of your report, your debt service payment, you'll see that actually that's going to be lower payment than what was expected for the month of, or for the September 2021 interest payments. It was about 38,000 something thousand less.
Is that because of what we approved a couple of months ago that's already?
Yes, and so your entire 2012 series is open over now, paid.
Good.
And then the only other thing I had in quarterly investment report, just to do the summary of your tech pool, money markets, active CDs, pledged securities reporting, March quarters. Any questions?
440,000 collected for, I know that's a quarterly plus monthly. Is that the most we've ever collected?
We did collect 450,000, I believe it was in February, but I do remember seeing something a little bit higher than that.
Just out of curiosity, this is, what is the police drug and miscellaneous fund account for? It's on page 87.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the mayor's question in a moment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was curious, the police drug and miscellaneous fund account on page 87? What's that for?
Police drug?
Mislenias.
Mislenias?
We had miscellaneous.
Yeah.
Is that a trade?
DA's office.
DA's office. That's a date.
Was that the C U's?
Yeah.
And to answer the mayor's question that was just prior, before, 440,193 dollars collected in the quarter collection that included May. In February, it's 415,790, approximately 10,000 more. But February, whereas every fourth month, every third month is quarterly month, February in addition to quarterly month is an annual month. So there's some businesses that have annuals. February typically ends up being, or has a good chance to be the highest throughout the year, but some quarters can exceed that. You know, between those two months, your earnings are second house.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you, appreciate you. All right, number 13, city engineer's report for May 2021. Chris Rose Muske.
All right, we have one.
WGA.
On first page of our report, the downtown water line replacement project. Since this report went out, I mean, they received approval today for the project, so they finished the project now on 149. That's what was waiting on, so that came in after lunch, so the contractor will be finishing that project up. Next, I'm going to discuss the speed studies of item five and the traffic signal analysis. Received those draft reports yesterday, I'll link up both of those, so we'll be dealing with them. They have more information on that, but at least on the signal, it does look like there's a warrant in for the intersection, which I'll take away surprise anyone, but we got the data and backed it up. Look number 20, day call report on the development section, highlights of Wendy's, I mean, I called the developer. So the plans that we got back from Johnson Carter, Wendy's have resubmitted. They were planned from before I reviewed them, it's all of 2019. So they sent us the whole set, so we sent it back for best of them, so they should be revising and getting that, as well as they submitted for a encroachment agreement. It's about to be wrapped in, that will be on my next month's, next meeting's agenda. For Town Creek Crossing, we had a meeting last week to go over the current construction status and as the guest picks are that inspection work for Town Creek Crossing, we have all meeting on sites tomorrow, just continuing that information between the contractor and our construction staff. We restarted the five weekly operations call this morning, get that, that going. On last page three, the, I think we talked about this a little bit, I think we had this detail last time, with the turn lane at 149 and 105. The current construction schedule is made for textile that will start in September to be constructed. So even though the project was let in April, by the time they go through their contracts and procurement and everything else, materials, they say it won't be developed, so we'll definitely expect to see contractor on site.
Chris, on that one, I understand it's the property that we purchased coming over. How about the Exxon? Did we ever get that agreement with them?
I don't believe so. So we're that, I think, continues to be left off as it was, finding a way to move it up. And is this correct or not, if you're relating the point on it? Finding a way to move it over when they redevelop their site and endeavor, got that resolution. I think also with down, the 149, purpose project is when that and life they happen at the same time. But there's no, no, on that side, true. So this one. Item four, the call for projects for the sidewalks that we talked about at your last meeting, that was submitted. So all those applications are in, so we're just waiting for your back. And then the updated Richard cover for the transition, we've had handful of transition meetings and documents, meeting tomorrow to pick up hard drive, all, I believe, all city documents. So we'll go through that, make sure we have everything that we keep running. For the immediate terms of how we broke up the transition was for what do we need today to keep things moving and what do we need eventually down the road? So we got everything we need for today to keep things running forward.
Chris, I talked to Richard about this last week. I promised Janet from the rugby club I was gonna ask about the payment work, sidewalk work for Memory Park. Did we figure out, was that part of, what we approved?
The call for projects we did was along Vessi Owens, they cut, but the time anything on the park project itself. And the reason being is just, doesn't mean they can't go around the same time while we have a contractor there, but it wouldn't be, since it's not on road, it's not on system, it's kind of outside the scope.
But you're familiar with what she's talking about, right? I really wasn't. I'm assuming, maybe not? Okay, we'll talk off. Thanks.
Chris, when do we expect to hear back about this? You, I know we submitted everything, but what's that timeframe?
They told us that they will likely be following that up in late August or sometime in September, we're thinking that they need with their official answer comes in October.
Wow, so we were really either ahead or they just take a long time.
They just take a long time.
It's that government, government moving, this speed of molasses.
I had about two hours before the deadline, I had to submit.
Exactly. Okay, I just wanted to understand what that timeline looked like, if it was next week or next year, but it's in October. Okay, thank you. And the transition from Johnson Carter has been easy, going smooth as promised?
So far so good.
Good.
We have, again, they've been providing information, we're working through, just kind of the chain of man and the chain of who to get update from what. And so we're just identifying the right people to get those updates from. And other than that, so far so good, so.
Staff, how do you feel, easy transition? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next one.
Peter Martin. I'd like to make a question, do we accept the department reports as presented?
Yes, sir.
It has been noted safely that we accept the department reports as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It is open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the department reports as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the department reports as presented. There is nothing on the executive session docket this evening, so there will be no possible action from executive session. Next on the agenda will be council and park. Does anyone have anything?
Just a quick follow up on the last meeting, we talked about maybe revising design ordinance. Is that something that we're gonna look at soon?
Oh, I just moved that to my report, thank you for the reminder. We had a, we had a good conference call with Allen last week, and so we're, you know, Dave and I and myself, or Allen and Dave, working forward through some of those things. And I think it'll probably be in the next month or two, we'll bring something back to council. One of the things we need to do is also drive around the city to look for items that we may be, we don't know, I guess we haven't known in the past week we do, but based on those observations, that we may.
Did we find out anything, I'm sorry. Do we find out anything about regards like political signs and things like that? We mentioned that.
He does have additional guidance with that, you know, going to get some guidance he's willing to serve. We will be open for some of those, just beyond what we got.
Okay.
Our current ordinance for downtown with banners, what, I know that this was a hot topic at P and Z a couple of months back. Are those allowed? Like for hiring for smoothies, for coffee, those vinyl?
You said hiring, like hiring something?
Yeah, like now hiring, yes.
They are able to put something down for less than 30 days.
Yes.
I think the city has attitude in the way that it's written, that if we needed to address it, we could certainly, you know, with these articles and things about, you know, businesses struggling, you get employees, we, you know, I've been mindful really, you know, since COVID started, you know, to try and allow those businesses, again, the attitude to find the staffing they need or the exercise hours.
So I don't have a problem with the staffing, but there's a new smoothie sign, and it just takes away from the downtown, I mean, the aesthetics, it just.
I'm not serious, but I'll certainly have to look at that.
Yeah, it's where that, where they used to fly the coffee banners. And it just, I guess, you know, with, everybody talks about the charm. I think everybody sitting up here ran on the platform of keeping the charm. And then when we have banners, vinyl banners that have anything other than now hiring, because you're right, it's a tough spot right now with hiring. But I just think that it takes away from the aesthetics of what we're trying to achieve. So I don't know, P and Z, I went to that meeting and I apologize, I don't remember what they came up with, but.
Really, it's more in the sign ordinance than it is the store coverage. So would be where I would look to that. Because it's something that's certainly temporary, and again, the sign ordinance even as it's written, you know, today, it should give us a latitude to address it.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
They gotta be, they don't know apartment is like for homecoming car.
There are 16 month stack log on orders, so we do have, we do have orders in, we're just waiting for them to come between materials and comments and fodder. We haven't forgotten you.
Speaking of P and Z, have we had very many applicants?
We have received one at this time, but the insert that will go out in the utility bills has not come out yet historically, I think that is what we just announced.
Just a couple of comments, I'm kind of the new kid on the block big time, so I've had enough time to kind of absorb things. And I told people when I came in, I thought we had an outstanding staff, things going in the right direction, every reason for a lot of optimism. But Richard, I can appreciate your position as a mid manager, because I know as being a principal, athletic director and whatnot, you have to deal with a lot of things. I just want to encourage us to not let the, I used to have this old saying about, don't let the tail wag the dog. We are a highly marketable place. And I assured the people when I was on the election trail that I want to see us negotiate from a position of strength and not in people's special interest. And I'm not speaking about any particular thing or person or anything. I just know that politics is politics. And in my short time, I can already have people who, oh, well, you're, even this morning, getting my truck fixed. Well, you're city council. Yeah, but I don't own the joint, you know? So how can we do that? And this is one of the specific things that I had on the campaign trail. When we convince our constituents and potential clients from the outside especially, that the way we operate, which will clearly define long and mid range goals and data driven decision making, they won't even push us eventually to fudge on anything. Well, you can just get, no, I can't. Well, you can just get, no, I can't, no, I can't. We have clearly defined goals and a way to get there. So, going into this August of 26 budget meeting, which, as I told you, makes my head spin looking at numbers, I want to ask something that drives me now in order to meet those three, five, and 10-year goals. So, the elephant in the room is still the infrastructure. And so, when I have people ask me, I want to be able to have an answer. The infrastructure is scheduled for X. And the biggest thing, of course, is the fiscal, how are we going to get there? And I know, Richard, you and I have had some personal conversations about that, Dave as well, but we need to get it articulated so that we're all saying the same thing, because that's the way government's perceived. The left hand don't know what the right hand's doing, and I can tell you from experience, coaching and otherwise, everybody needs to be on board and understand how to answer out there, so it doesn't become more political than it already is inherently, literally.
I think what you're touching on too is a workshop, since all of us, for all of us to define those three, five, and 10-year, we may even look out 20 and 30-year.
Yes.
When it comes to infrastructure, they're not just three- and five-year plans, meaning that's when you stop. So, yeah, at the workshop, maybe if we have a little extra time, or if there's an additional workshop, that we can put on there, on the agenda, that would be great, or the schedule rather, that would be great, so that we can get those defined, and that way council can start moving in that same direction instead of independently.
I think that really works really well, it's like, yeah, thus, you know, I think everyone on council knows, I sent out emails, times and dates, so looking for that. So, I have responses back from four or six, so for two of you who haven't replied, you can give them a few emails and reply. But thus far, four, four who have replied indicated that the one gives start time is good for them, if that ends up working out, that I think that would leave us, that would probably give us the time to do this in the first workshop. Certainly, we call it the second, because I'm a believer in planning and organized planning, you know, and, you know, and one of the things I do want to see in this coming budget, you know, I know something that the mayor and I have talked about separately, and I think I've been doing some, these are a while back in the last voting, is, you know, I want to see, I would like to see in the next budget, some defined categories for longer term. I'll call it savings for the purpose of this discussion, but target those two things like the future elevated storage and, you know, future capital projects, and I think that goes to.
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
Over this fall and winter, I expect, I think, you have some of the city staff, the primary engineers, to redo our longer-term capacity plan for water and waste park capacity, that's something that has to be done periodically and redone, it's been several years since the city's done that. I think all of those all work together. This city, growing as it is, has a lot of future infrastructure needs, but it's also in a good position to be able to get those needs in place before they're needed and not having us play catch-up. That's one area, you don't want to be playing catch-up. I think we're, we're in a good position today, and we're in a good position to stay on the right side of that equation, but you got a plan to do if you're, if you're tech or I'm tech. And so, we'll go ahead and make those notes, and we will endeavor to include that within the first workshop, first workshops, certainly in the second, just follow on before it's completed, if remaining with the others.
Thank you.
You're already moving adjourned next meeting?
Yes, sir.
It has been noted, second, we adjourned the meeting, this motion is debatable under a 520 vote. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, it is 6:56 PM, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mayor.